All right, let's call the meeting to order. We are minus a few planning commissioners. Hopefully, we will have a quorum, but in -- just being safe for ourselves in the public forum like this, we are going to have a special joint meeting, a San Bruno City Council meeting, San Bruno Planning Commission Study Session. We were, we will have a San Bruno City Council Study Session, and add the others when they arrive.
That's what I was saying.
Yes?
That's what I --
Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay, all right. Like to ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Item number two is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. As the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action were appropriate, the Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council on any items that are not on this agenda? Do we have a remote? It's coming.
What I wanted to ask you is very confusing. One says, "Public comment," and then as I look through here, there's areas where the subject can be brought up. So when is a good time to bring it up? Now or after?
Well, if the subject you're talking, you want to talk about is not on the agenda, now is the time. If it's regarding --
So whatever I talk about, it's okay?
As long as it's not on the agenda.
I didn't see it in the agenda.
Okay, well, why don't you start, and then I'll let you know.
Okay. This is something that's been bugging me for many, many, long times, and I said to myself today, "You gotta go, you gotta go." So here I am, Rico. Anyway, what I want to bring up is the -- where the grade separation is and where it's written or brought up that some housing is going to be there even higher than --
All right, let me stop you right there. Mark, I believe that's going to be addressed?
Yeah.
That will be addressed in the presentation.
That would be what?
That will be addressed in the presentation. We're going to talk about that.
And then you bring it up then?
Yes, we're going to talk about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else under public comment? Items not on this agenda? All right, go right into conduct of business. Before that, I would like to mention that we do have question comment cards, and we'd like you to fill those out as you can with any questions or comments, and you should have them now. Are they passed out already? Yeah, they're passed out. If you need some more, they'll be over at the desk, and if you want them picked up, just raise your hand, and we'll pick them up, and then we'll address those questions at the end of the presentation. Our conduct of business tonight is to review and discuss the next steps for the Transit Corridors Plan and associated draft environmental impact report.
Through the chair. Mr. Mayor, as in the past, because of my -- I live within the Transit Corridor proposed program and project, and since I have Rose here in the audience who'll keep me updated, I'll have to recuse myself, and so I'm going to have to leave and wish you the best.
Okay. Watch the game.
And, Mr. Mayor, if we could just take 30 seconds here to allow staff to relocate, since we have a much smaller group on the DS here tonight.
Sure.
We thought it would be more appropriate so that staff is not with their backs to the audience.
Sure, great.
Great.
Okay. Mark, you're on.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and Suge, he's someplace. The purpose of this study session tonight is to re-familiarize you, the council, and the planning commission, and the public with the Transit Corridors Plan, to discuss the environmental impact report and the next steps in the planning and approval process. We sent notice of this meeting out to 2,600 addresses. These are all addresses within the proposed Transit Corridors Plan area and around a 300-foot buffer around the area, including everything that's inside the area. So this is why we got a good turnout. And I'd also like to mention that we sent a question and answer handout to the neighborhood as well about a month and a half ago, and I think probably a number of people here received that handout. And we received quite a bit of, well, actually, probably about 15 phone calls, and people came to the counter at City Hall, and we had 150 hits on our website in response to that question and answer piece. And there were some concerns that people had, and I'd like to address this, you know, right up front. Some people had some concerns about the idea of eminent domain as part of the Transit Corridors Plan. And so what I'd like to say is there is no -- there is no eminent domain. The city has no intention or even authority to use eminent domain within the Transit Corridors area. So there's -- that is not in the plan at all. It's been a long time since we last met to discuss the Transit Corridors Plan, which is due largely to the shifting priorities resulting from the PG&E gas line explosion, explosion, fire in the Crestwood neighborhood. And however, the good news is that staff has been working on the plan diligently, and within the last year, we prepared the environmental impact report for the Transit Corridors Plan, which means that the planning commission and City Council can take action on certifying the EIR and adopting the plan. We, as I mentioned, we sent out, well, actually, this is on a separate occasion, we sent out 2,600 notices to the neighborhood to solicit public comment on the EIR, and we held a planning commission meeting in April to allow members of the public to comment on the EIR, and about a half dozen people showed up, and those comments were taken, and they're reflected in the final environmental impact report. So they're part of the public record. The comments are there, and the responses to the comments are part of the public record. In addition, there was a presentation to the Airport Land Use Committee to, basically to, it was for consistency with the Airport Land Use Plan, and that was a successful presentation, and the Transit Corridors Plan will be found to be consistent with the Airport Land Use Plan. We've also created a website, which has actually been in place for probably about a year, and as I mentioned, we've received a lot of hits on that website, especially after we sent out that Q and A piece, and we received many more. So the website is planbruno.org, and all of the documents that related to the plan, the background documents, any public hearings, any staff reports, or any materials, maps, and so forth, you can find all of those on the Plan Bruno website. We have a presentation for you tonight to illustrate the plan, discuss the plan, and the EIR, and the consultants that assisted the city in preparing the plan, MIG, Chris Paynan is here, whom I think you've met before, and Ray Pendrow, who worked on the environmental impact report. And the presentation is organized in sections, so after each section, we've sort of created a pause where we would hopefully seek your input and comments and questions, clarifications that you have. But I also want to say that at any point during the presentation, please don't hesitate to ask questions, and that's the way we're structuring it, is this should be an open discussion, and we're ready to, you know, to explain the plan as best we can to you. And so with that, I would like to introduce Chris Paynan, who will start the presentation on the plan.
Thank you all. It's, whoops, let me make sure I -- kind of tall, got to put it up here. Well, as of course you know, there's been a bit of a pause in the process, but we're very glad to be back with you here this evening, very honored to be with you and the members of the community. I do want to emphasize that feedback, comments, questions point, this is a draft plan by its nature. We want your comments, your feedback here this evening. I do want to also emphasize, as part of the leadership of the consultant team, this was built by many different folks, and city staff have been fantastic in helping to shepherd and put together the materials you'll see here this evening, as well as everything during the plan process. The presentation itself, I want to cover kind of just some background, some of the planning process. How did we get here to this plan? How did we get to the vision? We'll be covering that, as well as the key plan components, that you can obviously access the entire full document online, but I want to cover the major points. Mark will be joining later on in the presentation to cover components related to the infrastructure and kind of the policy context areas. And then Ray Pendrow, right there, he is an environmental assessment expert with our firm. He prepared the EIR. He'll be covering that portion toward the end of the presentation, again with those pause points in between. So with that, may I head into the presentation? Is that any questions before that point? Okay, great, thank you. Well, as we said, I think it's best to start with some of the history and context, really leading back to who we are as a community, and we explored that a lot during the process and with the city of San Bruno. And as we know, the city began as kind of an extension of the railroad that came down from San Francisco. There were even streetcars back then. And as the city moved forward, the roadways started to get built, and in fact, in 1912, if you're not aware, the El Camino Real first kind of mile was paved of that first state highway in the state of California, right here in San Bruno. So just this year, we're celebrating the 100th anniversary of that event. And so over time, the community grew up. It began to urbanize and suburbanize and really grow in, see much of the neighborhoods that you see here today during the middle decades of the last century. But as part of that, in, I think it was 1978, something that you're all probably familiar with, quite familiar with here, Ordinance 1284 came about, and that was really a reaction to this kind of single-family neighborhood environment where folks thought that higher densities were encroaching into the area and that there needed to be some sort of, you know, response to that, that somehow the neighborhoods were being impacted adversely. So for those of you who don't know, 1284, basically created in 1978, prohibits increase in densities in residential neighborhoods, prohibits buildings over three stories or 50 feet tall, and then third prohibits structured parking as any element of some sort of residential apartment building, et cetera. So that's a major part of what has helped shape the community where we are here today over the last three or four decades or so. Kind of a final context point really is the airport. Mr. Sullivan mentioned it at the beginning, but the impacts of noise and building heights that are allowable through the zone, the airport zone, and the flight patterns, that also has determined some of the growth and development here in the city. So kind of moving into the last decade or so, I think everybody's familiar with the Crossing, and so very interesting project. In the year 2000, there was Naval Administration facility there, about 20 acres, and that was being disposed of by the Navy, and the city stepped up and said, "Hey, we see this as an opportunity for our community." And so a plan was brought about, a specific plan was made, that really emphasized creating a mix of uses here, which is kind of new in many ways in kind of a higher-density, mixed-use format with multifamily, senior housing, recreational facility, hotel plans, et cetera. And a key point being, and you can see here across from the shops of Tamfran here, key point being that thinking about this development in terms of its proximity to transit, its -- to the BART station, to SAM Trans lines, and the walkability to services that it could provide for folks in the area, I think was a major element. And the point being here that all of this together is what you would call today transit-oriented development. I'm even sure if that firm was fully coined back then, but you guys were kind of at the cutting edge of that. And the idea that, you know, this was kind of a big move and a big step, and some pretty laudable things came out of it. I think overall, the community has said this has had some pretty beneficial impacts. Now, important point being that this took a valid initiative with 1284. It had to go to voter approval due to the building heights and the densities that were here, and so that's something we'll be discussing later on in the presentation that helps to just kind of set the context for where we are today with the Transit Corridors Plan. Speaking of that context, just a few years back, the community went through a general plan update that looked at the entire city as well as what is the transit plan, or the corridors area today. It called for a mix of uses, some density change, and development along these key stretches, and really set the overall policy context for moving into the Transit Corridors Plan, which came on its heels there. So just to dive into the plan itself and to orient everybody, here is San Mateo Avenue, right here. Here's 101, and here is San Bruno Avenue. Here is El Camino Real, and this is Huntington Avenue going up here toward the BART station. You can see through this aerial photograph, the areas that are shaded back are not a part of the plan area. So what we're talking about here today, all of the design guidelines and standards and things I'll be talking about in a few minutes, just are proposed for this area that is in the darker aerial there. And that's quite purposeful. The idea being that this plan is about change to those corridors, incremental change compatible with the community, and minimizing adverse impacts on what are roundly recognized as wonderful neighborhoods. This is a wonderful city with great neighborhoods, and throughout the planning process and the input we got, we needed to respect that. And so all of the planning kind of stems forward from there. So as we take a bit of a walk around the area, or drive, or bicycle, you know, the planning area, I think most would acknowledge, has its positive attributes and some challenges. You know, there are some nice shopping environments along San Mateo Avenue. There's a sense of a place. There's almost an eclectic sense of place. That's one of the things I love about San Mateo Avenue. You go there and you go, "This is San Bruno. This is eclectic." It doesn't feel like it's prefab, like you pour it on water and fertilizer and boom, you had some, you know, awesome, cool street. It really has a sense of place that is quite unique to the community, and we took that into account as a community as we planned the area. But there are some things that are less desirable in the planning area. You have some big building walls, blank facades, vacant lots and spaces, lots of curb cuts and parking lots that you might walk along, and it's a nice environment if you're pushing your baby stroller or walking with your friend, and then all of a sudden, whoa, this is a difficult stretch to cross this intersection or go along this kind of vacant space. And so we see here some of the images, both, you know, maybe positive or negative in your own mind, and some opportunities. What do we do with certain opportunity sites? We'll show you later on, theater space and other places. Certainly, the grade separation project is a big deal in the future, and the Caltrain Station, an important part of this plan, and really evidence of change here in the community on a scale that maybe hasn't been seen really since the Crossing a decade or so ago. So building from this contextual understanding and existing conditions analysis that we go into, it's a great deal in our planning documentation, we started to build a process with the community that was very rich and personally very rewarding. It was very multi-layered with, you know, web access, of course, but also a lot of in-person stakeholder meetings, a steering committee that consisted of 17 folks who, throughout the planning process, and a variety of people, property owners, residents, business owners, advocates from different groups and organizations, a really wide swath of folks who helped us craft the plan and its major components. We had several workshops, community-wide workshops. We had a joint session here where we talked about draft components together, people around tables and maps, and helping to carve out, hey, I like this, this is appropriate in this area, you know, this isn't appropriate. I don't think that is something we want to see in our community in the future. And so it really laid the foundation then for a vision and a vision statement for the community, but some key planning elements, some vision elements or principles to abide by for the future. And so one thing that was really key was downtown that is active and vibrant kind of round the clock. People thought that that was important. We want to inject life and vitality, as well as reflecting that distinctive character that I spoke about. The, you know, kind of a planner wonky term there, multimodal network. Well, what does that mean? It means that folks just aren't getting around by automobile anymore. Behavioral patterns are changing, and access and mobility needs are changing, and people are saying, "Hey, we want to be able to easily travel by train more and bus more and easily walk and bike and have this very pedestrian and bicycle-oriented community." We're not getting rid of the car. We know the car is important, but maybe it's coming further back into balance in this multimodal network. A key element throughout was, we can't do this, create a pretty place, walkable, bikeable, without being an economically vital place, and we need to foster a good retail environment, good tax revenue generation for the city, office employment opportunities, all that part of the economic vitality. And really thinking in terms of being sustainable from a, you know, kind of green perspective, that was certainly a part of the process and the input, but also from a, financially kind of making sure we are sustaining ourselves in all ways into the future. We don't want to build mixed-use development that we can't fill and occupy as a, you know, and have really active and vital uses. And I spoke very much about that safe and inviting realm. I think we have a lot of that along San Mateo Avenue. People spoke, how do we overcome kind of some of these barriers? El Camino Real is difficult to get across. How do I make a better, easier walk up to the BART station? And then the idea that the downtown core itself, but also emanating outward, can be this vibrant, transit-oriented village, and the Caltrain Station is a big part of that. I think, you know, the assets of both Caltrain Station and the BART Station are really amazing. A lot of communities would love to have that sort of capability. So those are some of the big picture elements. And then we went down to more detail in two different areas, and then I'll pause after this and get some thoughts. But the document goes into private realm design guidelines and public realm design guidelines. What do we want to see from development that, you know, contributes to the character we want to have as a community and contributes to all those kind of broader visions that I just went through? And so one of them is that a lot of people think of new development these days and think, wow, that's going to just be this big wall, and it's going to be so high, and I don't know how I feel about that. Well, we need to make sure that the building massing, we don't have these big chunky walls and things, but it's physically broken up and therefore more aesthetically pleasing. Corners are very important. In fact, one of the things I love about this community is the angles that you get from El Camino Real going this way, San Mateo Avenue going that way, and that can be hard from a development perspective, you know? When you want to plan a piece of land, it's harder to have something in a rectangle, but there can be some very interesting opportunities to contribute to that larger vision point of distinctive identity and creating a place that's unique and special. Again, the building facades themselves, having, not just breaking up the massing, but making sure there's nice materials and what's called articulation, making sure we have good windows, fenestration, arcades, things like that, so that we have high-quality development in the community. This is a big one about the activity of ground floors and transparency in the ground floors. So that relates to use, making sure that the ground floors have something going on, such as retail and office and whatnot. But a big point being that that ground floor has a lot of windows and doorways and glass so that the shopkeeper can look out and see folks and vice versa. You can have a great, great use in your downtown or your community, but if it doesn't engage the street with kind of this transparency and folks are walking along a big, heavy, blank wall, you know, it can really be a burden or a hole in your downtown environment, and folks express that that's not what they want. From the, continued on the private realm design guidelines, the ability to capture and treat, retain and treat stormwater runoff, you know, kind of the old days of infrastructure was, well, let's pave it all up and then put it into a pipe and have it run off. Well, you know, that then collects into larger and larger streams or out to the bay, and the pollutants can be very damaging. The idea that we can naturally kind of take the stormwater runoff from a parking lot or a space like this and the oils you have from cars or the street, and we can actually put that back in and naturally feed into and cleanse in the groundwater itself is kind of a key part of thinking about development these days, and we want the private realm developers and folks to adhere to that as they move forward with their plans. So then, moving from private to the public realm, and we think about the public realm, these are open spaces, streets, things like that that are our connective tissue in a community. Well, we want to make sure that we have gathering spaces for the community and that the station area itself is not a place where, you know, you're just kind of in and out, but there are public gathering spaces, a plaza that's nicely scaled. The ability, I've mentioned the, you know, kind of identity being a major part of what people expressed, that we shouldn't be afraid to be a little bold and say, hey, this architecturally is significant, and we have, you look and you see some colors or some sort of art, and you say, hey, that's San Bruno. That's pretty cool. I know what that station is or that station area is. I've been there before. You have a lot of this along San Mateo Avenue, but not everywhere in the community or along the Transit Corridor streets themselves, but land, nice landscaping, trees, what's called bulbouts, so that instead of the street coming here and the car whipping around the corner here, this is repeated on the other side over here, and that bulbout is shortening the distance for folks to get across and making it safer for that person with the stroller or the wheelchair or the dog or whomever to be able to get across the street. And not the dog by himself. We don't want dogs running around their own. They leashed dogs with other folks with -- dogs with other folks with them. The historic components, I mentioned 1912, that's pretty cool, I mean, there is a rich history here and that certainly, I think the, you know, the kind of mid-century elements too, a lot of communities lost that, they kind of have destroyed their history. You go to, I work in a lot of communities across the state and around the country, and to have what you have particularly along San Mateo Avenue of this building after building after small shop, after market, after coffee shop, after thing going on, is pretty unique. It is really great. So many other places kind of bombed out, said, oh, we don't like that, and they kind of put in an ugly building or they put in a parking lot, and the historic components qualities are something that folks expressed and we have put into the design guidelines here. Again, that pedestrian realm, very important with different types of treatments. And then, you know, people talked about the climate factors here of, well, sometimes it's cold in the evening and the fog rolls in and whatnot, but in general, people said that activity, you know, they described the places they like, and so many of those places have this type of environment, that outdoor dining activity, they say, well, you know, if it gets a little chilly, we can have heat lamps and things like that. So this plan really looks for opportunities to have folks gather in that manner, in this kind of re-envisioned or boosted downtown environment. So, I realize it's a fair bit of information to go through, but wanted to pause here and see if you have any comments or thoughts.
Any questions? Any questions for the presenter from the city council? I know we have a couple of planning commissioners here, they're not formally allowed to sit up here right now, but any questions from specifically the planning commissioners? How about the public at this point in time? The public, any questions or comments on the presentation so far? Okay.
All right, we'll keep going. So, starting from that admittedly broad base, those are nice thoughts, hey, let's make it pedestrian oriented, let's do these different things, well, how does that get specifically applied in the environment? And that's where the development standards come in, the kind of guidelines are the wish list and the development standards are the rules of guidance to abide by. And the idea really as a major structural element of the plan is to understand that all those things I just talked about, we really want to think about plan area-wide. It's very important, but we also want to acknowledge that each of these stretches of street intersections and whatnot have, they're different areas, they have different character and different attributes to them, different physical space to them. And in doing so, we want to grab upon the character they have and build upon it. So, you know, there are more specific elements, I'll go through here, that relate to each of these five character areas to build what we want to see there. So just to outline each of them, we have Huntington Avenue here in the north, again, the station area is a character area around that Caltrain station and kind of into the industrial blocks and things back in here and at that key, kind of crazy intersection right now with all the development or the, you know, construction going on. We have San Bruno Avenue, which, one of the first things we sat down, folks said, wow, this is a gateway to the city and it doesn't necessarily feel like that. Here we are, this is, this should be a sense of prominence and what does this, what does this state for us as a community? How do, what's that sense of place and arrival? El Camino Real, obviously, its importance as a regional connector is very important and you all have been a part of, it's seventeen-city Grand Boulevard initiative, correct? Where the seventeen communities along the San Francisco Peninsula here have gotten together and worked together with transit agencies and counties here to create a sense of, okay, we're all connected by this first state highway in the state of California. And so, we paid a lot of attention to and worked a lot with those folks in that process. Also, understanding that this is San Bruno and this takes on its own character along that string of pearls, along the different communities. And then finally, San Mateo Avenue, I've talked about that a lot as a major character area. So we're going to start with the station area, and this is an older photograph, if we took this today, which I should have on the way in here today, you know, all the construction and the grade separation going on. But again, people talked about sense of place, what can we do, how can we, how can we treat this in a different way and achieve those different goals of creating a more walkable place, achieving some higher density in areas that can take advantage of that transit, not unlike the crossings, what was done there. And, you know, because you have this transit infrastructure, this station, it's kind of a shame not to take real advantage of it. So, over the course of the process, we worked with folks and this is the kind of before condition, and then this is the envisioned after condition. And of course, the grade separation is going on right now, and this was earlier versions of what it might look like and, you know, just kind of conceptual, but the idea being that right now, we have kind of an open, not that distinguishable of a space, you certainly have important uses along here that contribute to the community, and I don't want to diminish that at all. You have the dealership here, the car dealership, you have muffler shops, you have other things that are all a part of the economy, they're important. But as things evolve over time, the community expressed, hey, this is an opportunity to build in a great transit station that would have maybe an office complex that would attract high-tech workers and link to the economy of the Silicon Valley. And what a great location, my gosh, being right here next to the airport, being able to hop on and get down to Facebook quickly, if I'm a software developer, to be able to hop on and get to downtown San Francisco quite quickly, or, you know, watch the Giants win as they did tonight, tied up, 2-2, very good. You know, all of that is a part of the thinking here, we mentioned the station area, the plaza component, so that's built into this kind of conceptual vision. Drilling down more specifically then, and I'm going to go through each of these character areas and convey, you know, what the development standards are considered here as part of the plan. But in this area, maximum heights, and we did break down, here's San Bruno Avenue east and west, there are different components there, you know, the east and the width of the roadway heading up to the train tracks and then west of the roadway, they do have different characters, so we did make some, you know, kind of differentiation there. But we show the heights here and the stepbacks and the setbacks, and what does that all mean? Well, the heights, this is the highest height you'll see as proposed as part of this plan in anywhere in the city, and it's, and you know, we talked with the steering committee a lot about that, we talked with community members, it's part of the workshops a lot, and, you know, most people we talked to said, if this, if we're going to do this in any area, this seems to make sense, that's where development can take place, because an office building that could serve and be that kind of employment generator, isn't going to come in and build a two-story building, that's not the highest and best use for this transit station area. So, we're, this is the one spot right around the station where we would go up to that sort of height. Now, stepbacks are an important part, and you're going to see that kind of repeated throughout, stepbacks are an important element. On a building, you have what is setback, known as a setback, at the ground floor level, you have X number of feet from the street and sidewalk, the right-of-way of the public realm, and that's known as the setback. And so, the building goes up, and then on upper stories, that setback in the air is known as a stepback as you bring the building in. So the idea being that what you don't want to do is create building faces that go right here and then go all the way up, straight up, and as a pedestrian, you're walking along and you feel this mass of a seven-story building right next to you. What you want to do, in our estimation, what we worked through with the community and what we think is good design, is you create a building frontage that's maybe two or three or maybe four stories, and then you step things back at these upper levels. So you take that massing further back in, so it doesn't feel like it's looming over the street. The development itself gets that density it needs to make it pencil out. I mean, developers with land values these days, they oftentimes need more, a little more density in there to make it work, to actually, you know, financially work for them to do. So the idea being that architecture needs to be very, in any scenario here, and you'll see moving forward, needs to be very cognizant of kind of that weight and feel and view sheds, that we need to make sure we step back, we allow for balconies and things to come off and soften and allow for views and not have huge, straight buildings going right up in to the air.
Chris, could you go back to that slide? I just wanted to clarify one thing, there's a typo in that slide where I, hopefully people aren't too confused by it, but that actually should be west of San Mateo Avenue or east of San Mateo Avenue.
Yeah.
So the west of San Mateo Avenue is west to the railroad tracks, and then the east is east to Second Avenue, so that's, just to clarify.
Correct, yeah, so this is along, yeah.
Okay, so, in the station area, San Mateo Avenue sort of goes through the middle of it, north-south, so that what that should read west of San Mateo Avenue rather than San Bruno Avenue. So the taller, the taller buildings in the station area would be between San Mateo Avenue and the railroad tracks. And the shorter 65-foot would be between San Mateo Avenue and Second Avenue.
Thank you very much. And, you know, this is not only, this idea of stepbacks, and you'll see in additional materials here, is not only about that street experience, it's also about that residential experience in behind. We want to make sure we build in sensitive transitions to these great neighborhoods in behind these kind of more bustling corridors or streets. And so you can start to see some of the relationships here, moving to El Camino Real, so that's the second of the character areas in the plan, and you can see here, El Camino Real is a, it's a wide street, if you walked along it or walked across it, it's a good place for cars, not necessarily a good place for pedestrians, so how can we make it a good place for everybody? And so, I won't go through all the elements here, but you can see here, you know, accommodating that important transit, making sure we have a nice landscaped bulbouts, medians, opportunity for signage and entry into the area and art, kind of that identity for the community. This is the idea of that stepback I just talked about, roof gardens and things, people thought, wow, we have commanding views here, can we allow for that and kind of encourage that in places so that we create this nicer environment? And so, you know, right now, you have, El Camino Real is, it's a hodgepodge as far as the development is concerned, outside of this right-of-way. Well, we want to beautify the right-of-way, and then we want to make sure that the design and development that comes in is done in a way that creates a nice sense of scale, but also frames the street. You know, some places where it's lower, it's one or two stories along there, with such a wide expanse of a street, it doesn't hold very well, it doesn't help, you know, kind of as a pedestrian and feeling of an urban environment. So that's the idea of, you know, this sort of building height and density. The idea also being, as I mentioned, back to that transit orientation, the more folks you can have living in well-designed places like this, that can walk right to the downtown and support those businesses on San Mateo Avenue, can easily walk or bike to the BART station or can easily grab the bus, that's the planning that is a part of the character area here and throughout the plan. So, some of the specifics here, you can see the maximum of building height of five stories along El Camino Real, you can see the stepbacks here, so, and then the front setbacks, you know, there are many places you walk along, and this is the type of environment we want to create, right here, a more beautiful street. There are many places you walk along where the building might be something that would be good for the street, but wow, it's set really far back, and so I'm walking along having a good experience and feeling comfortable, and then there's a really big setback, and we want to make sure that we kind of bring the buildings to the street as they develop over time and help frame the street. And, you know, this type of development may not be unlike what you would see here. I mentioned about that density transition sensitivity, and I think that along San Mateo Avenue, the third character area, that comes particularly into play, because you have this residential environment that comes right up into the core of the area. So the idea being that we don't want this building, right here, going right up against, you know, the property line here and a home. What we want to do is set things back and step things back so that you are, you know, creating better transitions, you're not creating environments where you're necessarily looking down into folks' private property and whatnot. You know, this is a context-sensitive thing, where these standards you'll apply and work through that with new development that comes in, but, you know, in creating this environment here, which is what people said, outdoor dining, beautiful street, stuff going on, we don't want to have that to have too adverse of an impact on the surrounding community. So you see here, as we get into San Mateo Avenue, the current environment itself, you know, you've got one, two, maybe three stories along there, we didn't think it appropriate to allow up to five stories in the area. So, you know, we would have a three-story kind of building face, and then maybe a fourth one would be stepped back, because it would be a little incongruent with that wonderful fabric you have there to kind of have something pop right up out of it. So, as you can see, these development standards are really important to customize and tailor to each of these character areas. The fourth area is San Bruno Avenue, you can see here that this, because it is a less wide roadway than El Camino Real, in order to kind of frame it and create spaces along there that would give you this sort of environment, we don't recommend, nor do the community desire, going, allowing development to go up to, say, five stories. You know, then you start to feel a real canyon effect and you don't have a nice ratio of the street width to the building height. So, that is the context there with San Bruno Avenue. You can see, actually, so one side, sorry, the west side, as it gets close to El Camino Real, allows for this five-story, whereas the east side, because of the lock configuration, is the four-story building height, correct?
No, it is, it's five stories along, it was, the overall height is low, is lower.
That's what it was, I'm sorry.
So on El Camino, it's up to 70.
Seventy feet.
And this is 65.
Okay, I apologize for that. We definitely took into account, we did not want as much building height along San Bruno Avenue as El Camino Real, and I misspoke on the four versus five-story, but the idea being that you would still need to keep the overall building height lower. Thank you, Mark. That happened to me in the middle of a big presentation like this one time, and I had to hang up on my mom. That's about the only time you can hang up on your mom, is when you're in the middle or something like that. So, anyway, the fifth character area is Huntington Avenue, going north from the Caltrain station area, and this is a unique environment in that there's not commercial activity along there, it's not kind of this mixed-use environment or mix of uses that you see in the other areas, it's mostly kind of two-story residential, and it's what we planners call single-loaded, it's on that one. and it's what we planners call single-loaded. It's on that one side of the street because you have that Caltrans right-of-way, that track for the Caltrain going here. But that doesn't mean that we can't create a better environment. And folks said we need to have better lighting, we need to look at ways to put in pedestrian lighting, maybe banner features, and maybe like a sound wall and screening here, create a nice pedestrian path and cycle track along the east side of the street. So, you know, again, different applications of different types of design, given the character of the area. And it's really an underutilized connector space. We talked about the underpass, under 380 there, and making sure that that is a safe, well-lit environment that could even have art and different things, so that people don't go, yeah, I'd like to walk along. This is fine walking along Huntington Avenue, but wow, when I get to that underpass, I don't feel comfortable, it feels strange. Got to think that, of that whole path for folks along there. So, you know, down in, by the station area is the only spot then where we do have, because Huntington Avenue kind of links on the north that environment that I just described, and then down right at the station area is where we have the kind of five-story allowance there as it steps into the station area itself. And so, as part of this, those are the five character areas, and then the plan goes into a few different site opportunities. The reason being, we wanted to look at and not just say, whoa, you know, these are the planned features and this is what we'd like to see, but what, how does it start to really look? How might it pencil out? We did pro forma analysis, where we looked at development assumptions, costs, we had developer roundtable meetings, folks on the committee who allowed us to understand what works from a development standpoint and what doesn't. And so, and how can we then put forth design features that really reflect all of the stuff I've talked about here, and help stimulate and catalyze what we want to see? So this is the idea of the Caltrain station environment here with that seven-story office building allowance at the corner here. We talked a lot, this happens to be at San Bruno and Huntington Avenues, this spot right here, so this is the grade separation going on there. But, you know, we looked at kind of underutilized sites, or vacant sites, or lots that, you know, maybe it's not the highest and best use, it's not a historic structure, maybe this type of thing could help us, you know, create a different environment. And so we looked at this specific one, but we really thought that this could be kind of, it allowed for some prototypical analysis where you could take this type of development and see that it would actually work for a developer to do and create in other places in the area. And then finally, this was a neat part of the thinking and brainstorming with the community is this triangle here where El Camino Real and San Mateo Avenue meet, in the sense that, how can this be more of a marker? We talked with folks who said, yeah, my cousin's come through here a bunch, and he's like, you guys have a downtown in San Bruno? What? I never knew that. I drive by El Camino Real every day. And so it was hard to see how, you know, what's up here. There's even a little topography that goes up the rise. And so, again, these are, this is just conceptual. This is not some proposal or some architect saying, hey, this is the plan, I'm going to develop it. This is the idea that at the south end here, this is San Mateo and this is El Camino Real, at the south end, we could create an interesting public plaza space that we would have interesting mixed-use building. Maybe it's got a green roof to it. We talked a lot about civic or community uses. Could we get a kind of a theater use in there? Could this then, you know, be blocked off? This becomes this great plaza-street environment. Maybe there's flush pavement that goes out onto San Mateo Avenue, and then Farmer's Market, other activities. We close off this corner of downtown during certain times, and we create that community activity. So, again, a fair bit of information, but that's the five character areas and then some application with those opportunity sets.
Good. Any questions from the council? Comments? Irene?
Um, oh, I have, thank you. I don't know if my comments are appropriate yet, so are you going to go through the other pieces and then, because I have some overall comments that I'm concerned about, and then I have some specific concerns as we go through them, so I'll wait.
Why don't you give it a try on the overall?
Okay, well, for the overall, on San Bruno Avenue, there are, you had the buildings and then the setbacks, and then I appreciated how you had the privacy, like the fencing and all those kinds of things. It's like, how, let's see, how much control, how much input are the neighbors going to have? I mean, I know these are very specific kinds of questions, so let me, let me go back a second. If I was a developer and I had this book and I looked at some of the things that were in here, I would, I would not necessarily think there was a lot of protection for the people who lived behind the, behind the frontage of all those streets, including the people who on San Bruno Avenue, closer to El Camino, there's single-family homes right now that are bracketed by commercial enterprises. And it's, we, years and years ago, I think did a disservice to some people in Montgomery Street area, where it started out as residential, and then they allowed, the city allowed commercials, and then the residents, residents were stuck between these commercial, like, you know, car repair, or they had these things, and they have their nice little house in between these two commercial plots that were not necessarily conducive to raising your family next to. So I just want to make sure that this, a lot of this looks great. I think some of it can be really attractive and well-done, but I want to make sure we have protections for the people who live behind it and next to it. And I don't think we did a good job at, not, we, the city years ago did a good job in the Montgomery area to protect the people that were there. So that's one piece. And then another piece, this is obviously a long, long-term plan, 2035?
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty, okay.
Yeah, twenty years.
So what, I think what happens, and I've seen it in other cities, you get one developer in, and he does what he does in one piece, and then next to it is this crummy old building that's, you know, that's not well-kept, and the landscaping's horrible, and so all the good things you want to accomplish don't really get done. You know, it just doesn't go together. So I'm sure you have had experience with other cities where they have some transition plans, some way to move the existing, not such great, architecture, land-use piece to go better with what is proposed here. Am I making any sense?
Let me take a crack.
Okay.
I'm not fully sure, and maybe, Mark, you can augment. Well, first of all, going back to Mark's statement early on, there is no element of eminent domain in here whatsoever, as I know you're not suggesting. The idea being, though, that as you create new development and good development, you know, the value of that kind of maybe less desirable use next to it is diminished. It becomes, in development's eyes, a, you know, a more valuable piece of property that could then contribute to what is being created with an nicer streetscape environment, with, you know, nicer architecture and things like that. So this is a long-term plan, as you said. What this does is set the framework and kind of the rules of the game, so that as the market rebounds and as things change over time, it allows for, it allows for kind of, you know, the changes, the desirable changes we want to occur, to occur. Oftentimes, communities have planned or, you know, created districts in certain ways where even what you want to happen can't happen because of the regulations and the codes and the specific land use designation. So the idea here is to, is to set the framework for the pub, for the private sector to then come in and, you know, take advantage. The other element is, when you marry your public sector investments, or when you create public sector investment, that's an incentive for private development to occur. And so marrying those two things and giving a plan where you're showing, hey, in the future, as funds become available, we are going to create streetscape enhancements along this area. That becomes an attraction to typically, you know, good development to come in and marry with that. Now, all the process needs to be behind that. You need to have design review, you need to make sure that you're going through the paces, that you don't just let anybody come in. But this sets the basic rules of the game to allow for that, that sort of economic development to occur. Did you?
I think one of the examples is that we have the, currently, we have vacancies along El Camino, temporary businesses, say, just south of, just south of the library, City Hall. It used to be San Bruno Ford, and then most recently, we had a garden center that closed down. So we have vacancies. We have a temporary, temporary used car lot within the old car dealership. So there's a mixture of one-story buildings and a sea of asphalt. So with this transit corridor plan, it could invite a developer to talk to that property owner and say, the city has got this plan together, we're not going to be in the, we're not in the car business, and we're not in the garden business. We are possibly in the office building business or mixed-use business, and so proposing, you know, multi-story development, you know, on those, on that stretch. That's how, that's how the transition happens. We don't go, they don't go and knock on doors and say, you know, are you willing to sell your property so that we can tear it down and, you know, and build multi-story? You know, you see it all up and down El Camino Real, where the used car, you know, the used car industry has, or the car industry has pretty much, you know, diminished. And so we have vacant lots. We have, you know, no development other than, you know, paving along El Camino. We have underutilized development, one story, you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just want to, to add to that, that the, I think the plan was developed as sort of a market-based approach. So that was one of the reasons we did have professional developers and real estate brokers and so forth on the steering committee. And the idea was that, you know, what would it take to attract a developer to invest in the corridors area? And so the, the sort of the shape and size of development kind of, kind of came out of that. So we, so a developer would be willing to invest in a property if they could build X there, you know, so high or so forth. And, and, you know, we've seen that. We talked to a lot of people who have a lot of interest in, for example, the G.W. Williams site, the cinema site, and we, you know, it's very hard moving forward because they're just limited in what they can do. But that said, the EIR did look at exactly what you're talking about. And you can sort of, you can sort of look at it, there are two, two ways to look at it. There are edges of the plan that are on streets, so that the residential properties are on the other side of the street. And then there are also areas where the boundary goes along property lines. So there's actually a residential property right up against the boundary of the transit corridors area. So when the EIR looked at that, they basically concluded that that's a significant impact.
Yes.
And so, it's, you'll see that it's not considered a, an unavoidable significant impact because there were mitigation measures that were proposed in the plan. And that was to, as Chris mentioned, the setbacks and the step backs, was to increase the amount of setback and setback when you're adjacent to a residential property. And I think what that also means is that in some cases, you won't, you know, you will not be able to build a four or five-story building. It's just not, you know, the geometry and the relationship of the parcel next to the residential, it's just not going to be possible. When you factor in the setback and the step back, it's not going to make sense. So that will happen. But as you, as you say, it's an incremental, you know, things will change in the area. And, you know, hopefully, we could get enough of the, you know, the positive, larger-scale, more attractive development, and at the same time, you know, minimize the impacts that we would have on the residential neighborhoods. As it is now, I mean, you could build, in this entire area, you can build three-story buildings, straight up, right? I mean, there, we would have a hard time in our department, you know, denying a project that said, you know, we want to build a three-story building and here's a, you know, a residential parcel right next to it. In this plan, we're attempting to soften that, soften that impact, and to be, you know, to be sensitive to the residential properties.
I think what this all, this is all about for me is that this is an invitation for developers to come in. And instead of a developer coming in and saying, hey, you've got a vacant lot, this is what I want to do, but you guys really haven't thought about the future, 10, 15, 20, 30 years down the road. This changes all that. They can come in and they say, this is what we'd like to do, and let's see what you have planned for the rest of the city in these corridors going forward. Well, we have these special requirements, we have these height limits, we have the vision of what we'd like to do down here, and we'd like you to be a part of that. And so they, they're investing in something not just for themselves, but investing in something for the future of this entire city. It's going to take many years to do, but we can't set this groundwork any sooner. We have to get it done.
I think that's very well put, and I think, just to add to that, that they then become a part of this larger strategy about creating place and achieving all these other goals. A developer coming in one-off typically is not thinking of all this other stuff that the community wants to achieve. Well, now, they're going to be plugging in to, and a part of a piece of the puzzle that helps us achieve these larger goals that we want to see. And it's a, it's a puzzle that will take a while to build and complete, but that's the direction we're heading.
Any questions from the public or comments?
I have a question.
We have a portable mic, maybe we could use that, so we can get it on, right here in front.
Could you stand up?
Yes. Thank you. What contact have you made with developers, or how do the developers know what's going on other than what's been put on the news or public information?
We've had some local developers of substantial ones on the actual steering committee, so they're very aware of what's going on. Major property owners in the downtown, at the time when we went through all this, were part of the steering committee, and they're very, very positive about it. Other than that, Mark, have we?
Yeah, I think when we typically, we get frequent requests about property and opportunities for development in the city. And we inform people that we're working on this plan, and we've gotten, you know, very, you know, very positive response, and people basically saying, well, you know, keep us informed, tell us, you know, when this is going to happen. And that's basically just through the normal process of doing business, we keep people informed.
Okay, this is an amazing plan, and it certainly, it certainly should be marketed in some way, so that the people, maybe no one from San Bruno, maybe some guy in Kukamunga might come up here and say, hey, I want to, I want to build a 40-story, no, 40-story, excuse me.
It's not allowed.
Don't make, don't make girls have a hard time.
Four, seven-story buildings in this area. But it would broaden the circle of interest dramatically if there was some way that we could communicate this information to the general public, so that people like that would come here.
Yeah, the word is really out, and we've had a lot of interest from developers. We had a developer, there's We had a developer that was very interested in the theater site, but for, you know, some unfortunate reasons, they couldn't fulfill the financial commitment. And, of course, the economy had a lot to do with it, but I'll just give you an example, you know, when we did the crossing, I mean, we had nothing there at all, and now we have 1,076 units. We had no tax base at all there, and now it's $300 million. And after the crossing, the small little strip started with Jaxx, and now we have a few developers chomping at the bit to put in a hotel. The RFP for that hotel is going out shortly. So, all of those things, people are looking at saying, wait a minute, you know, YouTube's up here in Bay Hill, we have a whole lot going on, you're five minutes from the airport, and instead of the Silicon Valley thing, or maybe Genentech, you know, this is a little microcosm of what's happening in this whole area. And it's not just high-tech, it's the people that work there. You go to Bay Hill now for lunch, and you can hardly get in any place. So, it feeds, starting to feed on itself, which is a good thing, but San Bruno is known, and the word is out. People just want to see that we're making a commitment as a city to set the standards going forward so we don't have a hodgepodge. It's really important that we do this now, going forward.
Thank you very much.
I think we have another question over here.
Thank you. I served on the steering committee, and I just wanted to bring up an issue of context. I wanted to commend the planning team for actually getting, incorporating all the comments that the steering committee had. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up was that this whole idea of stepping back the building, the idea of having a pedestrian corridor that is actually inviting, also comes from the fact that we are also respecting the wind factor in this entire corridor. We don't want to create buildings like Van Ness Avenue in San Francisco where you have these tall buildings right next to the, to the street, and you create this wind tunnel that distracts from the street activity and allowing for what we hope is quasi-Pacadena-type cafe activities. But allowing for interior applications of that cafe style. So, you could have cafes that are in the, in the street, but respecting the wind, acknowledging the fact that there's a lot of wind in San Bruno. So, just wanted to bring that up, that the stepping back is actually helping avoid issues of environmental context. And so, feeding on that, I also wanted to talk about the civil, the civic aspect. There's quite a bit in this plan about improvements to the road, improvements to the pedestrian context, lighting, safety, et cetera. One of the things that I wanted to bring up, and it was brought up by one of the supporting agencies, is that the plan sort of needs to be funded, or should be self-funding, so that vendors or shopkeepers, developers see a direct impact of their money that they're putting towards tax dollars. So, if they see a direct impact, they see improvements to the area by the city at the same time that they're doing development, that helps generate more growth. So, as we go forward, I think we should acknowledge that and find ways to actually promote that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Rose?
It's a good place.
It's a good place.
I lived in San Bruno seventy-one years. So, if you think I know anything about San Bruno, ask again. As an example, before I go into this other thing that I didn't understand one word, thank you, I want to say something about freeway 380, if any of you remember when it was being planned. Okay, they took 200 homes on, east of the railroad tracks, 200 homes there. Then, their next plan was to take up 500 homes where I lived, San Bruno First Edition. Then, I and other group of people, we went to every meeting that you can think of, whether it was in Sacramento, Los Angeles, Stockton, wherever it was, we went. Because they were planning on taking 500 homes, imagine, on the average, of three to a home, that's 1,500 people being displaced. Caltrans really was wonderful. They called me up and says, we're going to be at your place at Forest Lane, such and such a day. And so, they changed it from having taken people, they said they were going to put 380 50 feet within the race of Tanforan properties, 50 feet within the properties. That was a big thing for us in San Bruno, not to lose 500 homes. So, this is why we have to be very careful of what we do and what we hear and what is told to us. Now, I'm going to come to San Bruno today. We, the great separation, I forget how high it is, and I imagine people that are working on it think, hey, that's not a bad idea, have high buildings over here, because here it is, a great separation there. Forget it, we don't want it, we don't need it. That's the gap. That is where the airplanes are coming through, and they go through there first, and then they come through mine. And they come pretty low, that impact, if they have a number under the wing, I could read it. That's how low it is. United Airlines is one of them. It's really awesome to think that we want to raise the heights of these buildings in east of El Camino, which is low-income census tracts. That's where you find more affordable homes. So, let's take care of San Bruno. We have 46,000 people in San Bruno already, in an area of five and a half square miles, which 40% of that is freeways and roads and public buildings and so forth. So, we have a chance to make San Bruno a really nice town, rather than kill it with too much of everything. Traffic, 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 even the motorcycles are loud and noisy traffic where I am. And everything seems to happen east of El Camino. And that is not right. We want to protect that area. We don't commercialize it. We don't want to commercialize it to benefit San Francisco and the airport and that kind of stuff. Let's think about the San Bruno people and not the money factor. Let's clean our streets and fix our sidewalks. I think there's more, but I may have forgotten.
All right. Thank you, Rose.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. We really made an effort to reach out with our number of community meetings about this. And as the presenter said earlier this evening, TOD, Transit Oriented Development, well, okay, you know, buzzwords and stuff, but you find out that a lot of people now, if you go from one place to the other and work all day long, you don't need a car. And a lot of people, and San Francisco's a great example, you go down by the ballpark, my office was a few blocks from there, in South Park, not too many years ago, and right south of there, off a third, was a dump. It was a mess. It was old, dilapidated piers with rats and everything else. Take a look at it now. And people don't need, in those buildings, to drive a car. And that's not necessarily where we're at, getting people out of their automobiles, but if you can bring development to a city in a proper way, where people can go from a third story downstairs and walk across the street and get on Caltrain, and go up the peninsula or down the peninsula, or walk a few blocks away and go to Bart and go into the city, or go out to Livermore without having to spend a dime on gasoline, I mean, those are some of the things that I think we have to think about. It's not money, it's improving our city overall, and I think we've made a lot of strides in this effort here to do that.
So, I just have a few slides left, and then, we're going to move into some final slides with Mark and Ray. But I did want to emphasize, again, going back to the general plan and other components, this is not done in a vacuum, the complete streets policy for the city, and thinking in terms of how this is woven into who we are and can reflect who we are from a policy standpoint and visionary standpoint with our leadership and the entire community. So, the idea about complete streets is definitely embraced in this project, and I talked about it a bit earlier, where we kind of balance the modes, where traditionally, for the last 50, 60, 70 years, we've created streets so that it's most comfortable for the automobile, it's as quick as possible to get from place to place, you know, be darned the person who's stuck in the crosswalk. So, the idea of complete streets is the notion that more people are riding bikes, and how can we create streets that invite them to do so even more? How can we help the pedestrian around more? So, there are a variety of different elements of complete streets, and they're reflected in the plan, but this is San Mateo Avenue and El Camino Real. You can see here better, more well-marked sidewalks and crosswalks, those bulbous that I talked about, lots of bicycle improvements that we discussed, in different areas, looking at potentially, you know, as a transportation policy for the city. One thing that makes cars go fast is the width of the lanes that they're on. Sometimes they're 12, 13, 14 feet wide. We all do it. If you have a wider lane, you just naturally go faster. Well, this isn't to stop cars, it's, the idea of complete streets is to say, well, if we narrow that lane width by a foot or two, that, or three, that actually gives us more room on the edge for pedestrian improvements. Or a planner strip where we didn't have room before because the building or the private property was too close, you know, now we have the opportunity to put up those trees that we want, or have those drainage features that we want. So, the complete streets policy context is really important. This graphic, you can see here, this is not what San Mateo Avenue and El Camino Real look like today. San Mateo Avenue comes here. This is part of that overall thinking that I talked about previously, that we worked with our transportation consultants to say, you know, for safer crossing and something that's more navigable, as well as maybe a plaza space or gateway or art feature here that would truly celebrate that entry into downtown, that an option in the future might be to, instead of have San Mateo Avenue coming this way, it would come here to fully signalize intersection where you can make all turns in each direction and create kind of a different environment. By doing that, cars come here and they slow down and they go down that really great downtown street. Another important element of the plan and policy for the city is related to parking. Parking is always a concern in environments, basically every city across the country. This plan and the overall policy look to maximize the use of existing parking that we have, as well as thinking about a park once strategy. You know, if you have a downtown environment that is eminently walkable, you can get everywhere, it's safe, it's well-lit, and it's nice to walk along, and there's activity, you create the opportunity for people to just park once and then experience that whole environment, rather than, oh, I'm going to park here, and then, boy, those three blocks are really not that great to walk along. I'm going to get back in my car, I'm going to cause traffic to happen on that street, and then I'm going to park down there. You know, you can take a lot of traffic in those trips off the street if you promote this sort of parking policy. And so, a number of elements to that, as we said, maximizing use of existing parking. Because of the location and the ability to walk and bike around and to the proximity to transit, the opportunity to reduce parking that is required of existing developments is a key component to kind of reducing overall parking needs and that kind of dependency in the area, but also helping to make development more feasible. The less a developer has to put into parking cars, they can actually make more into creating that mixed-use development. So, with that, I would like to hand it over to Mark to talk about the infrastructure elements.
I'll speak a little bit about infrastructure. The, a lot of, this is the stuff that you don't see that's underground, most of what I'm going to be talking about. The transit corridors plan did analyze the existing demand on infrastructure, projected future demand based on build-out of the plan. We had an engineering consultant who did this work and did the analysis. They identified potential impacts on water, sewer, and the storm system, storm drain systems, and they suggested improvements and provided broad planning level costs for those infrastructure improvements. Just in summary, the existing aging and deteriorated infrastructure, much of it, which is 50 or more, you know, 50 or more years old, will need upgrades just to meet current city demands, let alone meet the demands of new development. And the estimated cost for those upgrades of the infrastructure within the transit corridors area was about $13 million. In addition, the consultant looked at what additional infrastructure would be needed to accommodate the increased demand, you know, what capacity increases would be needed. And the plan identifies a need for about 7,000 feet of new water lines and 9,000 feet of new sanitary sewer lines to accommodate new development. And the cost of that would be about $7 million. So, the total cost to do both of those things, about $20 million. The water line improvements, the additional water line, would actually create a loop in the area, which apparently doesn't exist now, and would actually benefit a lot of other parts of the city as well, would be broadly beneficial to create that loop system. Other significant improvements related to infrastructure above ground include streetscape improvements along the corridors. And so, the plan also identifies potential funding sources for the public improvements. And as you know, a major source of funds that was looked at previously was redevelopment taxing increment funds. That was, those were considered to be available and would cover much of the cost. Well, that's no longer possible since redevelopment has ceased to be an available funding source with the end of redevelopment agencies earlier this year. So, now, we're looking at different sources of funding, and I think that the two major sources that are being considered and would definitely be, need to be, need to be further analyzed and studied and obviously brought back to you for your input and discussion, one of them is developer off-site improvements. So, especially in larger projects, developers could be required to install off-site improvements that benefit their project and also, you know, benefit the area. So, that's one area that infrastructure could be built through with development agreement with a developer. Another source would be development impact fees attributable to the increase in development. And impact fees, as you know, it's a, it's a process that would require considerable study and a nexus analysis to show the connection between the development and the need for the infrastructure. And so, development fees would be probably applied throughout the transit corridors area and would be an additional fee for building permits, for instance, for new development. Another source of funds is through grants. Since TOD is such an important, and it's not only a trend, but it's something that the state and the region are really pushing as a, as a way to solve a lot of the land use and population sort of needs of the regions to connect land use with population and transportation. So, grant funds are becoming available to... So, grant funds are becoming available to incentivize transit-oriented development types of projects. And for example, O-BAG, which is part of A-BAG, is a new program with infrastructure dollars. So, a lot of federal funds will be funneled through regional transportation grants and so forth.
Mark, why don't you just identify what O-BAG is and CDPG?
O-BAG is, yeah, yeah. O-BAG is one Bay Area grant. So, it's a new organization within A-BAG. And as you probably know, every community in the state is working on what's called a sustainable community strategy. That's by state law. And the sustainable community strategy is essentially, its goal is to do what we're proposing to do here, which is to focus development around transit stations, try to reduce reliance on automobiles, increase walkability and biking. And so, these grants are going to be funneled to projects which achieve that goal.
And Mark, sorry if I might just add, we've worked with a lot of clients on grant applications and things like that, not only for these sources, but another, number of other state and federal sources. The first thing they say out of the gates is, do you have a plan? How does this, we're going to give you money to, you know, help with your sidewalks or build on that transit orientation or get some bicycle facilities in. How does that fit into a larger plan? Where are you going as a community? So, the fact that you all are taking this step sets you up to get this sort of funding to then implement that plan. If you don't have this sort of plan, you go way down the list with all the other cities that frankly you're competing with who do have that sort of planning in place. So, this is a great step to get these projects built like you want to have and attract those funding sources.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, the city has actually had a great deal of experience. And as the two speakers have just indicated, this type of grant program is more and more available and intended really almost to force cities to use their zoning and development criteria in order to encourage the type of developments, transit-oriented development. The city has actually been relatively successful and has been benefited by a number of these grant programs over the last few years where we have received funds for our success in producing housing to meet both regional and local housing goals as well as to repair and improve street corridors where transit connections are made more available, both to pedestrians and bike riders. So, this is an area where we can't promise an amount or a timing of grants. This is actually not pie in the sky type of discussion. It really is something that we've both experienced and that we're seeing to be, as the speaker indicated before, not just a trend, but something that is really firmly being captured in the way development is done in our region.
If I might add, the next round of O-BAG, One-BAG, O-BAG, however they say it, monies, the policy now is seventy percent of that money has to go to its project-oriented development programs. And CCAG is controlling some of the criteria. And one of the criterias that we are bringing forward to the whole board is that any road improvements that we can capture having to do with pedestrians and bicycles and general road improvements have to be or can be as much as half a mile within the project-oriented development. So, that is real money and it's a lot of money and there are some cities that don't have these. And he was exactly right, you need the plans. And we are wonderfully situated to apply for and get this money. So, it isn't pie in the sky. I think the smallest amount is a quarter of a million dollars, up to, I think it's a million and a half. I'm not sure, but that's a lot, so.
And just to, also to clarify or to sort of extend that thought, the priority development areas?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, so this plan is actually in a priority development area. And A-BAG classifies priority development areas in two ways. There's a potential priority development area and a planned priority development area. And we are a potential priority development area because you can't be a planned priority development area unless you have an adopted specific plan. So, that's, I think that's what you're talking about. So, by moving forward with this plan, we become, we're still, we're actually still eligible to apply for grants, but you're more firmly sort of situated when you, once you adopt a plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
My point was, there is a lot of money out there and they are throwing it at these kinds of developments over other things.
Do you want to continue, Mark?
Okay, so I think, so this is not the most exciting slide, but the purpose of this slide is to, is to give you a sense of what the total amount of development that's proposed in the Transit Corridors area. And remember, this is, first of all, it's a twenty-year plan. So, anything that happens is going to happen incrementally. And whether all this happens or not, who knows? I mean, we have general plan projections, you know, that get adjusted each time we do the general plan. But in any case, the total amount of development within the Transit Corridors area, if you go from the, yes, that column right there, that is all that could occur within the Transit Corridors area. It's sixteen hundred and ten housing units, about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail, almost a million square feet of office, and that's primarily because of the station area. That's probably how much it could accommodate and some hotel development. And as you can see, the general plan already had included some, you know, projections for residential, retail, and office. And then all the way to the right, you see that the incremental amount that would be allowed or that the Transit Corridors Plan would allow with the zoning and the guidelines and so forth that are contained within the plan.
So, our general plan's already obsolete? General plan's already obsolete?
I don't know that it's obsolete, but.
The general plan, the general plan column is throughout the community, throughout the city, not just the Transit Corridors.
Right, well, that is actually, I should have been more clear. That's the general plan just within the Transit Corridors area.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's not the total general plan.
So, it's like a potential.
Right. Well, I think that sort of leads into the EIR discussion because the EIR is really based on the amount of development that occurs in the area and how that will impact traffic and various other elements. And Ray will.
I'm Ray Pendrow from MIG. I work with Chris. I was the, I am the project manager for the environmental impact report. I will try to be brief, but I know there are some issues that need to be explained. The California Environmental Quality Act has been around since nineteen seventy. This is it, and I do not recommend that you read it for entertainment. This law requires that your plan be analyzed for environmental impacts. The result of that is the environmental impact report that you've seen and it's on the public website. So, the two short terms are SEQA, that's the law, EIR is the report. I want to, I have to clarify some terms because SEQA has a language all its own. The plan is defined as a project under SEQA. Under SEQA, the term project covers things as small as an individual developer's project on a corner, all the way up to a citywide general plan. Those are all called projects under SEQA. I will explain to you how this presents some problems under SEQA. A nearby example of a long-term, large-scale plan that's recently been adopted is the Downtown Redwood City Plan that you may be familiar with, and we wrote the EIR for The EIR has resulted in some changes to the plan, especially in the setback and step-back requirements that Mark mentioned earlier and that Chris explained with some of the slides, especially in transition areas near Hensley Avenue and Linden Avenue. Some additional setbacks have been put into the plan based on our analysis in the EIR. The interesting thing about your plan, which a term that needs to be explained here, is significant unavoidable impacts. That just is an evil phrase. It sounds so nasty, but it's a legal term under SEQA. And a significant unavoidable impact is an environmental impact where no feasible mitigation is available to reduce that impact to a less than significant level. The word feasible is defined by the city. Is there enough money to build it? Is the impact directly related to only the project at hand? Does the city have jurisdiction over the improvement that needs to be made? And I will give you a few examples. These are the topics that are in the environmental impact report. There's a chapter for each one of these topics. They're included in the SEQA checklist, so every EIR has to cover these topics. You have significant unavoidable impacts. You have six of them resulting from our EIR. The Downtown Redwood City Plan, which was adopted, it's a long-term plan, that EIR identified, I have written down here, twenty-three significant unavoidable impacts. And I think the city council added two more during the final hearing on the plan because they decided that some, a couple of traffic improvements just weren't in their budget. So, a significant unavoidable impact doesn't cancel a project. It gives you the opportunity to describe the benefits of your plan that outweigh these SEQA impacts. And I will give you a couple of examples from your EIR. A long-range plan almost always has significant unavoidable impacts simply because of the acreage and the amount of territory recovering in an EIR. As I had mentioned, the EIR can cover projects as small as a corner store and as large as an entire general plan. So, there are remnants inside SEQA that are focused towards smaller development projects, but they are also applied to larger plans. This is the case here. So, the sheer acreage of the Transit Corridors Plan guarantees some significant unavoidable SEQA requires that we look at the worst-case umbrella for long-term development. And when Mark made the comment about that build-out table, that is important to me because it's those build-out numbers that trigger traffic calculations, utility calculations, and so on. So, when SEQA requires us to look at the worst-case umbrella for development, this does two things for the city. It makes your EIR legally defensible and it remains applicable over the long term as projects are, as individual projects are proposed in the Transit Corridors area. You don't want to write an EIR and then build something that's bigger. Then you're in legal trouble. And it's also public information so that the public knows what is the largest possible outcome of this plan. It may never happen, but we need to analyze that under the state law. Another reason you may have a significant unavoidable impact, and you do in this case, is because there are some traffic improvements required that you don't have jurisdiction over. El Camino Real is under Caltrans jurisdiction and so are the freeway ramps. So, to be conservative, we can't guarantee that Caltrans is going to fund these improvements and the city of San Bruno doesn't have jurisdiction over those roadways. So, we have to call it a significant unavoidable impact under SEQA. And finally, and I have an example for this, because we're working with a long-range plan, some impacts are uncertain until an actual site-specific project is proposed. The impact that this relates to in your EIR is historic resources. Because the plan does not include specific development projects on specific sites right now, we cannot guarantee right now what the Planning Commission and the city council ten years down the road will decide about a historic building on a particular site. That's called speculation. And we're not allowed to speculate or guess what you may decide ten years later about a particular building at a location. The city has procedures for identifying and preserving historic buildings, but the EIR consultants cannot guess what decisions you will make based on what particular building some developer wants to restore or demolish. So, under SEQA, that has to be called significant and unavoidable because that's a decision in the future for the council and the planning commission. I'm not going to go in more details unless you have questions, but many of these same topics are in this handout that was on the table called Frequently Asked Questions. And so, you can see I highlighted some and have notes. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions about those now.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Irene, Ken, Public? Irene has a question.
I just have a question. If I remember correctly, it cited eleven historical sites and that, and the areas. Are most of those on San Mateo Avenue in the downtown? I didn't see anywhere that it actually listed any of them.
We have a table in EIR that has the addresses of each one.
Okay, so it's in this one?
A map and a table.
Chapter seven.
And this big one? Okay. I didn't get to this big one.
It's somewhere near the middle, but it's chapter seven and I don't have all the addresses in my head. But there's a map with a table and the addresses.
Okay, I'll find it.
The figure will say seven dash something to line up with the chapter number. And that chapter even discusses historic districts adjacent to the Transit Corridors area, very similar to this transition area that we've talked about with residences directly behind the boundary. So, we even have to investigate what's nearby that might be affected.
Irene, was that just for information or were you?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I was looking for it.
Continue.
That's all I have about SEQA and the EIR. I will emphasize this last statement. The city, if the city is going to adopt the precise plan. The city, if the city is going to adopt the precise plan, the city must first certify the EIR. Those are two different terms. Certifying an EIR just means that the city has agreed that the information in it is accurate and that you've used it to help make a decision. It does not promote the project in any way. I've had a city council member in a nearby city tell me that environmental impact reports are the most negative documents he's ever seen. That's kind of the purpose of them, to help you make the decisions about what might happen if the development comes. To have only six unavoidable, I mean, it's not a math game, but to have only six significant unavoidable impacts in an EIR on a plan this size is pretty amazing. And I think part of this is because Chris works about 20 feet from me. So we've put into the plan the mitigations already that help protect, like the wind factor that this gentleman mentioned. The setbacks also help with shadow impacts, help reduce shadow impacts, so that the plan has built in, this catchphrase, a self-mitigating plan. It has policies and standards already built in to reduce impacts. The significant unavoidable's are because of those reasons I mentioned to you about the simple size, Caltrans jurisdiction, worst-case umbrella, and that's where you get those six unavoidable impacts.
Good. Mark, where are we now?
So let's go to the next slide. Feedback.
We've got a little ahead, right?
Okay, so this slide has to do with the, the approvals that will be involved with the, with adopting the Transit Corridors Plan. And in addition to, to certifying the EIR, which is, is one approval, there will also be general plan amendments. And I'm not really going to go into any detail on those. We, we do have a handout, which I believe we passed out, and basically lists the, the general plan amendments. And we've, we've actually talked a lot about them because a lot of the changes in things like density, land use, and so forth, those are in the general plan. So we will need to amend the general plan to be consistent, so that the two plans are consistent. Also, in, in, in the traffic analysis, we'll need to update the, the numbers in the, in the traffic section of the general plan. So those are the main types of changes. One, one thing I did want to mention now is that a proposal that came from staff is that, that currently the general plan in 2009 adopted a transit-oriented development area. And that covers most of our Transit Corridors area, but the downtown was left as CBD land use classification. And our thought was that the entire area should be the general, the, the transit-oriented development land use classification, and then the zoning would handle the, the specific standards and so forth in the downtown and, and as, as it would do in each of the other areas. But essentially, it's part of the Transit Corridors area. So that was, that was one sort of big-picture proposal, which I think we can discuss at, you know, at a, at a, at a later meeting, but I just wanted to point that out to you. And the next slide is, do we, who has the clicker? Oh, he did. There we are. The next, another change that is something that you'll, you'll need to consider is, is ordinance 1284. And as, as we discussed, ordinance 1284 sets limits on building height at three stories or 50 feet. It does not allow an increase in density on residentially zoned parcels based on a, based on a zoning map of 1973, 74, based on the 1974 zoning map. And it also does not allow multi-story parking structures. So the reason that, obviously, the height is, I mean, we all know about that, I think we've talked about that a lot, but the, the plan also, the boundary of the plan incorporates residential parcels around the edges. And in some places, for example, in the station area, there's a block where there's sort of residential parcels interlaced with, with industrial parcels, for instance. In order to, to rezone those parcels, we, that will involve an increase in density. Actually, the, the, the example I gave you just now was not a good example because the station area is, you can't build more housing there because of the airport noise limitations. But in, in other parts where that's the case, we would be, we would be allowing an increase in the density, so those, the, we would need to amend ordinance 1284 in order to allow that to happen. And what's interesting about that is that the, the general plan has already changed the land use classification of a number of formerly residential parcels to transit-oriented development. So those, those parcels have the general plan land use TOD designation, but if we tried to zone them, we could not do it without an ordinance 1284 amendment because the, the density would increase on those parcels. So those are the, the types of things that you'll, you'll need to consider if you, if you decide to, you know, move forward with an ordinance 1284 election. And the, the steps for the election are, they, they involve a lot of public involvement. So it, it would require first calling for an election, which has to be done at least 88 days before the, the election occurs. So that gives you plenty of time to, you know, to develop your, the arguments for and against. And then ordinance 1284 calls for town hall meetings where the issue can be discussed and inviting the public and so forth to, to, to weigh in on, on that issue. So those are the basic steps involved in, in getting a ballot measure for ordinance Any questions about that? Okay, one, okay, so this, this slide, a little bit out of order here, but sort of, it's related. What I had mentioned before, all the green parcels are residential parcels, and the, the yellow, the, the solid yellow that you see there is the 70 decibel airport noise corridor. And as, as you may know, you cannot build new housing within the 70 decibel noise corridor. So essentially, that, that, that whole solid yellow area is off limits for additional housing, which is why the station area was proposed for, for office in the first place. But the other green parcels outside of that yellow area are the ones that I mentioned earlier would, in order for them to be included in the plan and become transit-oriented development, it would require ordinance 1284 amendment. And what are the next steps? I think we're, we're at the, we've, we're at the top step there, so we're, we're moving along. I think we're making progress. The, the next step would be a planning commission meeting in which the, the planning commission would consider a recommendation of certifying the EIR, doing the amendments to the general plan, and adopting the, the Transit Corridors Plan. Then the, the, the next step would be for the city council to consider those same, those same approvals, the general plan amendment, the finally, the EIR certification in the Transit Corridors Plan. And after that, if you choose, there's the consideration of the ordinance 1284 ballot measure. And finally, and also very important.
Was that repealed or? I'm sorry.
This, this part is actually extremely important. It's a zoning code update, and that, that is in progress now, and I, you met, I think, how long ago was it? A few months ago in a study session on the zoning code update. And what we're proposing to do is to include the, the sort of regulatory language or the development standards that are in the plan, they, they would be adopted through the zoning code update. And the reason for that is that a lot of those are very detailed, and the, the plan does not go into that great detail on the, on, on the zoning. And so, for example, land uses, you know, what, what can, what's permitted, what's not permitted, what's conditionally permitted. It's, you know, it's a long, it's a long list of things. So the plan, the plan addresses that generally, but not specifically. If you're, if you're in Laura's shoes and somebody comes to you and says, hey, can I do this here? It's, that would probably give you enough information. So the, the zoning code will provide great detail on what you can and can't do in the Transit Corridors area. And that concludes the presentation.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Do you want comments from the public first?
Yeah, any?
Well, before, before we go to that, I, I want to encourage the public because I don't think we're all developers in the audience here, and we're not all planners or planning commissioners or city officials. We have residents here, and it, I don't want to speak for you, but it could be complicated, and it could be a totally different language. If you have concerns, and if they're not even here, I mean, we need to anticipate what concerns there may be, what misinformation or perceptions that the public may have. We got delayed 10 years in redevelopment because we didn't, I believe we didn't outreach enough to the public, and there was, there was misinformation. We have residents here who probably think that something's going to happen, and they, you know, they don't know what to anticipate. So I, I'd like to hear from some of them. I would hope that there's, you know, some lay, layman terms that, you know, to, to ease any concerns that they, they have without having to go online and read through, you know, a few pounds of paper here. So I would, I would hope that we're, you know, we're encouraging that sort of, you know, dialogue.
Okay. Yeah, anyone, yeah, sure. Why don't you, why don't you go right to the podium now?
Is there, is there any way to bring this up so I can ask a question about this, this layout here of San Bruno Avenue and the corridor?
Sure.
To bring, to bring this up on there? I think it'd be easier for me to show you what I, what I'm concerned about. Something like this here, I can just.
That's right, that one right there.
I live on Seventh Avenue between San Bruno Avenue and Walnut. If my understanding is correct, on the north side of San Bruno Avenue, there's going to be a five-story buildings going across all the way up or to the Caltrans? There's going to be building, higher buildings right there?
Well, possibly, but.
Okay. One concern I have is we have on the north side of San Bruno Avenue taller buildings, and then you're going to have the Caltrans going towards 380, and you're going to have 380 right there. So you just built a, a nice little canyon, and the noise factor from 747 screaming over or the Airbus, or you got the MD80s, the older planes, it's going to be very loud. You're, you're creating a canyon, and you're going to have all that acoustic happening, excuse me, right there. I'm not a expert on that, but just by seeing that, that's going to create a problem. I know the houses have been insulated, the double-pane windows, but for a canyon, to have, have like a canyon right there, like I said, 380, the higher buildings and the Caltrans, you just boxed yourself in right there, and we will get the brunt of that noise right there on the other side, they're, they're not going to get that.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I, one of my concerns is.
Do you have, you have something else?
Yeah, so I am, I'm roughly, I'm roughly on this street right here, I'm going to see from my house, maybe three houses over, I'm going to see this. You know, if I wanted to see that, I could move to San, San Francisco and, and see a Victorian or whatever. Having any function in my backyard, I'll have, looking south, this either three or five-story building going all the way down, I'll see Caltrans, you know, only six blocks away from the Cal, the new Caltrans station. Like I said, I'll be in a canyon right there, so, you know, it's kind of nice about the backyard, you can look south, you see the hills all right there. But my main, main concern is the noise factor, especially the older 747 screaming through there. That's, that's the main concern too, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Chris, are you able to address that concern? And if not, how do we address it?
The noise impact specifically?
The noise and, and the fact that a canyon type of a built-out effect will accentuate that.
Yeah. Well, we, we definitely, in developing the plan, were trying to be very sensitive to, you know, balancing all of these desires, existing residents, view sheds, all of that. I, I think one thing that's important to understand is that just given market dynamics, you know, the, the build-out of the 1,600 housing units, you know, is, is a long ways off in the future, most likely. From a market perspective and the absorption and what, what's possible, you know, I, I think this is going to be, this is a long-range plan, and it's not an overnight change by any means. Secondly, the, the impacts of, you know, views and things like that are something we took a lot of care to address. And, you know, I, I will say personally, I, when you were describing your situation, I, I live in the city of Albany, across the bay. We've got Bark coming through, we've got I-80, it's pretty similar circumstance, and.
You don't have a second one sent to you?
I, I don't have that, and we can address that, and maybe, you know, Ray might chime in. I mean, we, we can, we can talk about that. But I do have a train whistle that's constantly waking me up. We'll commiserate together after this. But, you know, and this is just speaking from personal experience, and I don't pretend to know your exact situation or anything, but my house, there was a, a used car lot on the corner at San Pablo Avenue, just off the corner, similar to El Camino Real, very similar street. And it was a low-height use, a low-density use, but not aesthetically pleasing nor, you know, really contributing in, in many ways to the community in that environment. And they, they came in, and that was a change, new development came in, and it created a four-story building, two blocks from my house. And it was residential units, and they stepped back into my neighborhood from four-story down to, to kind of three and two-story, back into my neighborhood. But it's, it's a similar circumstance, and I, I'm, I'm not going to stand here and say that, oh, in this plan, we're going to achieve all that we want to with walkability and getting these new things in and the stuff we want to have, and nobody's going to be impacted in any, in any way. I'm not, I'm not going to pretend that. Would I, in my own personal circumstance, I, I lost a little bit of view of the Berkeley Hills, but I gained a mixed-use, like a sandwich shop, all these kind of eyes on the street, more activity that made that, that corner at San Pablo a more, you know, safe experience for my children in the area and whatnot. So, you know, these are the, the types of things that as you, as you work together as a community and you have these kind of rules of the game, then you, then you look at the, the individual developments as they come along, and, and you, you know, hopefully are attracting developers that understand and, and can, can work with the community to, to create the type of development and environment that supports the vision that the community. supports the vision that the community has outlined. So, you know, I don't know, maybe we can address the noise concerns with the EIR a little more, but that's just kind of a little anecdote I wanted to share. The aspects of the airport noise, as Mr. Sullivan pointed out, we were very careful to obviously abide by the rule that we cannot put residential within that flight path. And so, we looked at other uses than that, you know, and that is something that the EIR analyzed as far as from an impact perspective with the, as Ray said, traffic impacts, GHG, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, all of that are part of the analysis. So, do you have anything you'd like to address the gentleman's concern?
I don't know if my answer will satisfy the gentleman and as Chris said, you know, there may not be an answer for every individual's concern. But we do know that the plan is consistent with the airport land use plan. We can't make the airport go away. We do know that all new development must comply with the state Title 24 noise standards for interior noise. That's the state law is for interior noise. There are not particular SEQA noise standards for sidewalk noise or outdoor noise unless it's, for example, childcare center, outdoor play area. So, you know, we do have to answer these questions that are asked, but they may not answer every individual's concern about their particular environment. I am not aware, from the noise studies that I've edited and put into EIRs, of a noise canyon effect emanating from airplanes with setback and step-back buildings less than 100 feet tall, just my general knowledge of that subject. We do not have a street-level noise monitoring or noise forecasting for that simply because it's not a threshold or an impact question under SEQA. It doesn't mean people won't hear noise. It means the EIR and the state law do not require for this particular location and development additional study on that. It's not a SEQA question. The compatibility with the airport land use plan is. The interior standards for decibels within buildings or outdoor play areas, that is a SEQA question that has to be answered. People will have plenty of, you know, individual issues or circumstances that they encompass. They don't all go inside an EIR, but they are things to help you make a decision about the project. The EIR is not the only thing that you base your decision on. So, that's why you're here tonight. It may not be a question in Chapter Nine of the EIR, but it's an issue from someone who lives there.
That would just might concern my thoughts in this thing. It's, you know, what kind of a noise, guess what, we're going to be...
Well, I can't say that I am not aware of scientific evidence of that happening, but even the perception, you know, that you're concerned that noise will increase, you know, is something for the council to consider.
And it is, and if I could, I know where the gentleman lives. I can't imagine it getting worse. I mean, that's where I experienced how loud it can be, you know, on the east side there. And you can't even hear yourself think. I mean, you feel the noise. So, if we, I mean, there's got to be something else. I guess, like Councilwoman Irene was talking about, is that we're going to be, you know, judging, you know, the properties as they expose interest. You know, if a developer comes or something, we're going to have to let them know that, yes, we have, you know, these noise issues, we have the proximity to the residential, you know, and, you know, those are your roadblocks, those are your hurdles that you'll have to, you know, deal with. You have a sensitive, you know, neighborhood, residential neighborhood near you, so I think...
And that, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that happens too when you buy a house.
Right.
And they have to list these things.
I don't want to say that it's highly unlikely that we're going to experience in our lifetime a canyon because we're talking, I mean, I'm envisioning, you know, four- or five-story buildings on each side of San Bruno Avenue. But if the plan is in place, you know, the potential is there.
Just in that area, that's the flight path.
Right.
So, with 380, the corridor and that seven-story Caltrans building, that will create some sort of a canyon there and...
Oh, it would, yeah. Noise will bounce off of everything, yeah.
But where he's talking about is in the seventy-decibel area. So, you can't have new residential. So, what are the chances of you going five stories anyway without residential?
Well, this is, let me just clarify because these are all important issues. They're not all part of the EIR. This is the distinction I'm making. If you have new development in those areas, they must, if you have new development, they must meet Title 24 noise standards with insulation on the interior and so on, or you cannot build it. If they can't demonstrate that through their acoustical study, they can't build. Okay? Now, there are ways to do that, you know, create that insulation, but that is when new development comes within the corridor. For basic information, the EIR does have the noise contours map from the airport land use plan, you know, to take a look at. And that, as Mark mentioned in the very beginning, is a very strict set of guidelines because the city, as I understand it, does not have jurisdiction over that. They can't tell SFO, we're not going to listen to you, you know, thanks for the map. Meaning, it is a restriction. The last thing I want to mention is, and the baseline for an environmental impact is the existing environment. Meaning, the environmental impact is not retroactive in the sense that the EIR cannot tell the city to fix this gentleman's house. You know what I'm saying? It starts at what's there now. So, we're talking about several issues here. And if you put them all into the EIR, the thing would be three times as thick it is now. It's a state law that we're following. The idea is that you come out and you express these concerns so these people can hear. It may or may not be in the EIR and your, you know, ideas may be more important to the council than what's in the EIR. The EIR is a pile of information. You're a living person who resides here. So, it's all part of the decision-making process. And I do want to say the last point. I am not aware of scientific evidence of a noise canyon effect from seven-story buildings. I am aware of the noise that comes from that airport. But if it would be made worse by the new buildings, I do not have scientific evidence of that. And the acoustical engineers who helped us write that chapter did not identify that as an impact.
And as was explained earlier, you know, this is long-range down the road, but this whole process, and we still have to go through the planning commission and everything, not just now, but in the future when we have new development. So, a lot of that stuff is going to be concerned, be addressed with public hearings, public comment, you know, there's all kinds of things. But your points are well-taken and that's what we want to hear.
This is the first meeting I knew about, so, and just by looking at the diagrams, I'm going like, okay, that's going to be a canyon right there and it's going to be wrong. I know when I bought my house there, I know there's an airport there and I know it's windy, but making it worse, you know, and then especially having, on the other, the last paperwork I received, I just basically discounted back and I found out that my house is going to be, oh, I'm sorry, my house is basically going to be three houses over from this either four or five-story building. And, you know, to go outside and have a family function and look over and see another family looking down on me, you know, that's another concern that I have. And, you know, the view also. I mean, there's not that much of a view, but you still could see the whole west side of the skyline and all that.
You don't want to put yourself in a hole either, so, right?
Well, it's putting me in a canyon, what it's doing. So, like I said, I do, when I bought my house there, you know, there is an airport and I, it's great that, you know, San Bruno's going to get a nice big makeover, but, you know, it's always concerns when it happens in your backyard, not the, you know, other people's backyard.
And that's why we want to hear from you.
Right. Thank you.
This is a brief opportunity to piggyback on something you just mentioned, sir. This is called a program EIR. None of these drawings that were on the slides today, as Chris mentioned, are developers' projects from a developer who showed up and said, "This is my architect's design. This is what we want to build." It's a plan with standards and guidelines and so on. The council will have to go through more SEQA review when an individual address comes for development. When a developer comes to that intersection, they still have to go through some level of design review that the city has and so on, so that this doesn't allow an individual developer to just show up and say, "Well, it's right there on that corner. I'm building seven stories and it's going to be all glass facing your backyard." You know, there are still environmental questions that the city will have to answer when individual developers come and choose sites or want to build on a particular site.
Yeah. I think we have another commenter question?
My thoughts are on the same vein. I live on Second Avenue, right over there by you. When they talked about the heights of the buildings, you know, they said they were going to make it lower on San Bruno Avenue because the street is much smaller, you know, not as wide as El Camino, but five feet is really not a significant difference. It's the same number of floors, but it's less height, you know, five feet less in height. But especially past the Second Avenue, when you talked about, when we talked about that particular corridor, they only addressed one block, Second Avenue to, you know, north of San Mateo Avenue and south of San Mateo Avenue are east and west, just a very small block around the station. So, they didn't really say specifically what the height was between Second and Seventh for those buildings. But, you know, they're all single-story residential. You know, I would suggest that that be a much lower, you know, maximum three-story for that particular part of the corridor.
She got it wrong.
From Second to Seventh.
Anyone else?
My name's Eric Ribero and I live on Third and Pine. And my question is the rezoning of the area, making it business, right, and residential, is that correct? And I was wondering what the impact would be on our property taxes.
Mark?
It should have no influence on your property taxes at all because that's just based on the assessed value of your house, so that would have no...
It's not going to change any?
Yeah, and it's also, it's not inside the transit corridors area, but nonetheless, it wouldn't affect the property taxes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would like to know if there's any restrictions about the business, because we live in Second Avenue too and we are surrounded by mechanics and, you know, we have pollution coming into our gardens. So, I don't know if you have any restriction for the business or some...
The, yeah, there would be restrictions and in the general plan now, there's a, really phasing out the automobile, auto body types of uses in those areas because they're not, you're right, they're not compatible with residential uses. So, the, those uses would not be allowed. And, you know, I can't give you a list right now of all the allowed uses, but that's something that we would work out through in the zone code update. But specifically, auto body uses would not, would be not allowed in that area.
Anything else? So, next up? Oh, I'm sorry.
My comment is that we're very noisy and very windy. I'm afraid that when we plan on these outdoor seating area and nice walk, you may not do that as much as you planned for. So, take that into consideration. Second thing is that because the development is very elongated and I would like to see how you move people from along these transit corridor without having them using the car. Rely on walking alone is, might be difficult. It's very windy here in San Bruno and noisy, like I said. But like city of Laguna, they have a free tram and you don't have to drive. You can hop on and off along the stretch of that Pacific Coast Highway, which is very, very nice. Make people wanted to come to the area more. Another thing is that I like to look at the whole San Bruno, how you move people from up the hill to this area without having to bring the car. How do you connect it to the Bay Hill Shopping Mall? And we have a lot of teenagers, elderly that may not want to drive or not be able to drive or wanted to come down to this developed area. So, maybe there is a, it's not that far to walk, but because it's unpleasant to walk down El Camino, San Bruno Avenue from, say, 7-Eleven area, you can walk, very short walk to Bay Hill, but it's so unpleasant. So, maybe develop a nice pedestrian-friendly throughout the city of San Bruno, not just concentrate on that stretch of El Camino. So, we eliminate using the car. And hopefully, the city will not charge for parking once this develops because I enjoy the San Mateo Avenue free parking very, very much.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, you know, we've talked for a number of years with the Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance and that is actually based in Bay Hill, but serves the entire county. And we're talking more and more about shuttle buses and things like that around the city. And of course, you have to have reasons for shuttles to be active and this, in fact, would increase the possibility of that. So, you know, you make a good point and I can't speak for my other council members, we have no intention of charging for parking.
No, we want you to come down.
Yeah, we want you to come downtown. Right. Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council people. My name's Craig Adelman and I'm with a group called AmCal Multihousing and we've been working with you and one of the property owners on El Camino in the hopes of hopefully being on the leading edge of this effort in terms of building a sensitive multifamily development that achieves the goals that were covered in the plan today. And so, I came to speak in favor of the plan. I know that change such as this is always difficult, especially at this scale, and it's exciting to see the discussion and the turnout from the community as well. And this dynamic is not only healthy, but necessary for that change to be successful. But realizing the vision, particularly the long-term vision that is incorporated in the plan and that is incumbent upon the council requires courage and leadership and it's exciting to see that coming from you today. I've been doing this for a while and it's also encouraging to me. I remember a time when density was certainly a bad word and I don't think we're completely past that yet, but certainly the conversations about transit-oriented development and what's especially encouraging in my experience is seeing where the market demand is changing, particularly in the younger generation, towards just the kind of development and lifestyle that you're talking about here. Really embracing transit orientation, not wanting to spend your life and your time in a car is exciting to see that generational shift. And I think the plan as presented is... And I think the, the plan as presented is very consistent and forward-thinking in that way. This is not only good land use policy, it's good environmental policy, and it's also good social policy. And it's rare to see all of those wrapped up in one, and again, very exciting, I think, for, for San Bruno. It's also not only consistent with SB 375 that was discussed, and the sustainable community strategies that are required in communities throughout the Bay Area, and I have experience in numerous ones, but, but I, I think this plan in particular is very, very sensitive in a, in a fine-grained manner. And I think that's one of the things that's important for members of the community to take into account, as opposed to, I think, a lot of our historical lessons learned, particularly from the, the urban renewal work in the, the 50s and 60s, where there was a, a push to essentially bulldoze and completely wipe out the past. From what I see, this is an effort to, to really weave into the fabric of the community, the, the new with the old in a very consistent and enhancing way, and so that's encouraging to see. The plan accommodates not only the need for growth, but the fact that growth will happen, and, and, and addresses that in a thoughtful way. San Bruno has, and I don't, I certainly don't need to tell you, but I'm going to tell you anyway, because not as a resident, but as a developer who works throughout the Bay Area and the state, you have, you have incredible resources and amenities, you know, the intersection of three interstates, and, and the airport, and two major heavy, pardon, Caltrain transit, along with SamTrans and what have you, and then your geographic location between San Francisco and Silicon Valley. It's an incredible opportunity here. That type of infrastructure, Mark talked about, of course, the infrastructure that's going to be needed to support the plan. But what's also important that I didn't hear mentioned tonight specifically is the infrastructure investment that's already here that this plan builds upon, and that's the entire intent of the sustainable community strategies and the transit-oriented development concept, is to build upon these resources that we already have, and that San Bruno is so uniquely positioned to capture. And so, I encourage you to continue this process, and I encourage you, members of the community, to continue, to engage on this. As Mark pointed out, this is, the, this is not, by far, the end of, of the process and the steps, and there will be numerous other opportunities, but it's really encouraging to see a plan that has come from community participation and will continue to benefit to do so, and we hope to be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, Chris?
Just very briefly, I know it's been a long evening. I, I just want to thank city staff for doing a fantastic job throughout this project. It's been a long project, obviously, major things have happened in the community along the course of the way. Mark, Laura, under the leadership of Connie Aaron, you know, the, the rest of the staff have been really fantastic. The steering committee was a great part of this process, very dedicated. I know two of you were a part of that. And really, we go to meetings like this, kind of the end of a process, and sometimes two people show up. And the, the turnout here tonight, and the, what we've had throughout the process, and the diverse community you have here in all walks of life, and to have this sort of interest in how, how, you know, the future might transpire and how you can be a part of that, I, I think is really incredible. So, I commend the community. I think San Bruno is a wonderful place, and, you know, we're, we're thankful and honored to be a part of helping you all move toward those next steps. So, I, I want to thank you for having us here this evening.
Thank you. It was a great presentation, and you put a lot of work into it also, so. Next step is planning commission?
Next step is the planning commission.
Okay.
And...
Irene, do you have anything?
I do.
Oh, Irene has a question.
I'm sorry. I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, so you can tell me. As I read through some of these things with the design, particularly the design guidelines and things, I, I too think it's a wonderful plan, but I think some of it's not consistent. Some of the, and I have notes if you want them, some of the wordage says encourage, where, yes, it should, but it also has encourage where it, I think it should be shall, like you mentioned, clear window or tinted windows to encourage visual. In some places, it says it's encourage, and some places it says it's required. So, I, I just would like to make sure we are all, you know, it's all consistent. And then, on page 94, it talks about the uses, and I realize this is an incomplete listing, but I, I want to put my bid in for saying no on something. I have learned throughout my political life here that the earlier you say yes or no on something, the more chance you have of it getting done. So, on page 94, under uses, it says auto sales will require a conditional use permit. I personally don't think we should have any new auto sales allowed in that area, so I, I don't, and obviously, we can't vote on it now, but if that's part of what we look at in the future, I would appreciate it. And, oh, also, on the, do we have the Caltrain plans for their station?
Excuse me?
Do we have the Caltrain plans for their station? Have, I mean...
We do.
Okay, so, I was a little concerned, and maybe it's inappropriate to be concerned, but on page 76, it shows a very nice plan for the location on Huntington and San Bruno Avenue. It's lay, Catalyst Opportunity Site Number Two. And then, if I'm reading this correctly, across the street from it would be the Caltrain station site?
Right.
Okay. And the consist, it's just the design consistency is totally different to me. I mean, they don't, just, they don't go, they're right across the street, they're not very many feet apart, and they're, they don't have any relationship to each other. So, when we're looking at, it's like, I don't want a developer to look at it and go, huh, whatever. So, I'd like us to look at, to make them more consistent.
And I think that'll be part of the planning process, too.
Yeah, yeah, and, and just briefly, I mean, the difference between those two is, one, obviously, is the office building, and, and that's in the 70-decibel airport noise, so that you, you can't have housing. And the other one is on the edge where residential is allowed, and it was also considered, I think Chris mentioned earlier, as, as a, something that could, that form of, you know, four-story of housing.
Well, I understand all those things. I'm saying one looks like a glass-fronted...
The design is really different.
One, yeah, the, the two, either, either one edge one toward the other.
Right.
No. Edge, edge them closer together, however you want to look at it.
Think the design is a schematic at this point in time, so we can...
Well, I, I know, but I, I've been in places...
You're around.
I may not be, but I've been in places where you start out and they go, well, look, it shows it here, and I don't want us to run into that problem.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done now.
Okay. So, planning commission?
Planning commission is the, the next step, and we're planning for November.
Okay, and I can't emphasize enough, we got to keep getting the word out to people so that they know, not just on, you know, the internet or Channel One or something, but we had a nice crowd here tonight because people are very interested, so as we go forward, they're going to be more interested.
Yeah.
City manager?
If I could just add, for the benefit of the public, and we will outreach to the entire community, we've, we've really focused on the perimeter and the area that is directly adjacent to the plan area, so we want to make sure that we get the word out to the entire community.
Good.
But that said, there will be public hearings at both the planning commission as well as the city council. That's a, a formal invitation to the public to actually come and speak, and to let us know as part of the deliberations that both bodies will undertake what your thoughts are, so that they can be incorporated into the decision process.
Good.
I'd, I'd like to, you know, expand on that, because we've heard, now we've heard some testimony from the public, from the residents. They have real concerns about the adjacency to any development. So, in order to address those, I'm not saying that we're going to accommodate them to the T, but how do they know that we're listening? How do they know that, you know, that they don't have to keep coming to all these, you know, every single hearing and pound it on, pound us, pound us again on, on their concerns? We've heard them. You know, we should assure them that we've taken that into consideration and that it will be addressed.
Right.
I don't know how it's going to be addressed, I don't know whether it's going to be addressed, but, you know, that, you know, they don't really need to, you know, I don't believe they need to really keep repeating themselves.
Right.
Obviously, if there's more residents that have the same concern, then they, they should come forward.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but, you know, we need, you know, if you put yourself in their shoes, they need to be heard, and not just here and on tape or whatever, and they need to be addressed as to how we're going to either alter the plan...
Right.
...or put more conditions on the plan, you know, so that they can feel comfortable knowing that there is going to be, you know, some, you know, strict guidelines when and if that time comes, you know, in their neighborhood.
I just heard.
I think they heard you. Okay. Anything else? All right. Meeting adjourned to the next regular city council meeting, October 23rd, right here at the senior senate.